So it's four oh one and four, yeah, four oh one, and we've got all counselors present, Mr. Rogers or the staff ready to go? And now you're muted.
I see, I was on mute. We're ready to go, Mr. Sanders will take, take the lead on this one.
All right. Well, first of all, let me call a meeting to order, April fourth, twenty twenty two, Charlotte city council meeting. Will come to order, Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor McGill. Yes, I'm here. Aimee.
Here.
Counselor Pinkston.
Here.
Mayor Snook.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
All right, so we're all present. First item is there a motion to approve or to amend the agenda that was published?
I move to approve the agenda as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. So this meeting will be divided into three sections. We will first have a work session to hear and discuss a staff presentation. Then it will be followed by a closed meeting of council, which we shoot for roughly five thirty. And then the city council business meeting, which will begin around six thirty. With that in mind, it's all still technically one meeting, although I think there will be different Zoom addresses that you'll have to sign back into. At six thirty. So the first item on the agenda is a discussion of our affordable housing program. And Deputy City Manager Sam Sanders will begin the presentation and the discussion. Mr. Sanders.
Good afternoon. Just want to make sure you are seeing my screen at this time. Should be colorful dots, portable housing.
All kinds of colorful dots.
Perfect. All right. Just glad that worked. Again, good afternoon, counselors and members of the public. In this work session, we'll be focusing on the complicated but necessary topic of affordable housing. We have a lot to get through and there will be still a lot more to visit in the future for multiple discussions on this critical topic. And I will move as fast as I can while also trying to make sure that we have time to talk about a few things as well. This is the agenda for what I hope to accomplish in this time period, and it does seem to me already that we're going to take the entire time. Once we start with questions and follow up on that as well. I'm going to take you back through the HRNA report just briefly, give you a different spin on that as well as just remind you is. The way I look at my starting this job is that I became your housing coordinator right away because we didn't have one. But also I look at myself as a consultant in residence, which means that I am, I have been spending a lot of time observing, reviewing, questioning. Complaining, evaluating and testing all of what we do, how we do it, why we do it, and trying to figure out what else can we do to make it all run more smoothly and definitely run better. So I'm going to quickly run through the HRNA team report that they share with you and just share a different perspective as well as. When you're looking at what they sent you, their consultants, we hired them to do some work, they come back, they tell us, they don't necessarily. Spend a lot of time worrying about exactly what you have to say or what you think about it, just making sure that you get what it is that you paid them to do. I want to actually point out some of the things that you should be thinking about as you go back over this report and look at it again after this session. And then when I provide all these slides to you. So what do we learn from the report? We learned that since twenty ten, forty six point seven million dollars has been invested in affordable housing. Question that you should be asking is, is that good? The answer is yes, but good is relative, especially because you will never spend enough in affordable housing. I think most communities have found that around this country. And because the markets are constantly changing, there's always a need to do a little bit more, a little bit more and a little bit more. How do we know it's good? Well, when you consistently work to achieve the goal and you measure progress and you accomplish the metrics that you set. By that finish line, and that's why you, you can really look at, are we doing well or not? In that report, they also shared with you that sixteen hundred and eleven affordable units were constructed and preserved. They also pointed out that six hundred and forty additional households were served. Question that you ask is, or you should think, consider to ask is, can we do better and can we do more? And the answer is, of course you can, but how will that decision get made? How often will you commit more? How much more and when? Every one of these questions are critically important to managing a program and knowing the cap helps to manage the many expectations that also exists. So if we look at a couple of the slides that they actually shared in their presentation. And this was the summary of statistics that basically breaks down how the money comes in. This is how you spend the money today through development projects, program supports, operating dollars and admin costs. And that is a nice split of allocation of funds. It shifts with more resources being poured in, it shifts with priority setting. And it definitely shifts with performance assessments. Or it doesn't. Council decides, and that's what we will always want to remind you when you're looking at the way the program works. Is you will make those decisions and staff will bring forward data-driven recommendations. Our goal is to try to make sure that we can be consistent in doing that and that our data is good data when we bring it, when we bring in a recommendation forward. The next slide shows you that you've been primarily supporting eleven organizations with most of your money. It begs the question, is that okay? To those organizations, absolutely. To the organizations not on the list, absolutely not. So all that means is that someone's always going to have a reason to complain. Because they might not be on the list, or they may not be receiving as much as someone else on the list. Ideally, the way the program works is that, the way a good program works is that you're supposed to measure, are you really spreading the money around? And ensuring that everyone who wants to be a part of this conversation at least has an access point. Not necessarily equality in the amounts that they receive, but access to the opportunity to get on the field to play the game we're playing. With equity as a priority for council, we have to consider who is not on that field, and, and that's really what's important. When you look at nearly half of the CAF funding has gone to housing development and forty percent to housing programs. There are always going to be individual groups that will say that we didn't have a shot, we didn't have a chance. And part of what we want to make sure with our program is that we are providing access to everyone to not only get on the field. But to even be in the stadium where the game is being played so that they too can offer up what their contributions are to the work that it is that we're trying to do. For you, it is really important to question what, what's happening, who's getting what. This slide begs the question, who else could be on these lists? That's the point of the question that you, as a member of this community who's out talking to everyone about everything. Are there groups that you haven't heard their names mentioned, but they've talked to you about different priorities and they touch on the housing space? But you don't necessarily see them on the housing list. Those are things that need to be brought to our attention so that we can take a look at what's going on there and why they may or may not be participating. Who else deserves support for the ability to contribute to this affordable housing need? Because we, as we said, it's a big need and there's a lot of resources and a lot of good work that needs to be done. You look at this slide, you, one of the things that I wanted to point out from looking at this is. Going back to twenty ten, there's been consistent investment. That's always what you look for when you're trying to make a decision on whether or not you're doing the right things, and that is consistent investment. It definitely was lower than the four million dollar mark that they identified as the high point for the majority of the time period. We know that four million dollars is not the new number, you both wrap your arms around the idea of ten million being a, a new goal mark. This is the kind of analysis that needs to be done periodically. This is what we intend to be able to do periodically to show you how is that average mark moving? And when it gets to a certain amount, then we should be able to come and pinpoint, has it made it to eight million, has it made it to ten million, or is it even more than that? Twenty twenty was clearly a turning point, and we see that as the shift to this whole notion of the ten million dollars being a good number. We know that there are a lot of organizations that have already made it clear that ten million is not enough. Ideally, for us internally, we, we look at the fact that you endorse the affordable housing plan at ten million a year for ten years. And it'll be our priority to help you get there, and we'll make sure that we keep you posted on how well we're doing. This slide takes a look at the efficiency and in what we're doing and how are we spending our funds? The cost efficiency is per unit. You always want to make sure that you're hearing those references to how much money per unit are we putting into a project? It's fair to ask the question, is this good? And when I look at this, the way that these, these dots have been, have been marked on these two different charts here. The answer is yes, it's good, but that, that further affirms that the per unit figures are good. Because they noted at the bottom that soft costs. Like services, counseling and other program supports are included in these numbers. So they're making sure that you get as much bang as you can for the dollars that you invest. But the thing to remember is that there's always a need for more per unit because that makes it easier to deliver the much needed inventory. And it's really a balancing act. The higher the subsidy, the bigger those numbers will be. The organizations doing the work will tell you they need more, and they do because they probably have difficulties finding money as they need it, when they need it in other places. But your priority would also be that you expect that they do go look in other places to bring additional dollars to the table so that that number doesn't continue to grow. But it allows you to expand how many more dots can appear on these two charts. This is always a good one to look at because equity is a priority for you. And one of the ways that they decided to take a look at, at how well we're doing in the equity space towards affordable housing. Was to look at a comparison of black households to non-black households as beneficiaries. The reason that this is a good example of the work is, is actually making it to the right beneficiaries. Is that the sixty four percent of black households were funded by these different nonprofits that were doing the work. And these are the individuals who earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. For the city of Charlottesville, the average is forty four percent. So they're hitting above that mark. And you always want to make sure that the work is hitting up at the mark or above. To demonstrate that you're at least doing the, the quality work of, of reaching the households that you intend to reach. We only see black and white as a comparison. One thing that we have to remember in the equity space is that we need to make sure that we're considering the other minority populations in, in our community. That also deserve attention to be paid to their particular housing situations as well. So what we will do internally is make sure that we're capturing better and more consistent demographic data beyond just the black white comparison. Because we know that there are other minority groups in our community. And especially because we are a receiver community for so many refugees, it's important for us to be able to look at the plight that they find themselves in when they arrive here as well. And then one thing that has come up in some of the more recent conversations with a few of you, but I have heard consistently since I've been here. And how many current Charlottesville residents are being served? We have to make sure that because these are city of Charlottesville dollars that are being spent. We want to prioritize city of Charlottesville residents for receiving those supports. And wherever we see that things begin to go askew, we want to be able to highlight that for you. So that's why we have to be able to have the ability to do the analysis so that we can bring that to your attention.
Sam, what is that last column, PHA comma DPA?
Down payment assistance. That's just one of the programs. Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
This slide looks at, it's over half of the households served by home retrofit and single family new construction programs earn less than fifty percent AMI. This is the kind of information that we always want to look at as well. Because we want to make sure that we consider that it's reaching your target. In the plan, you said that you wanted fifty percent of the money to go to fifty to zero to thirty percent. We want to make sure that we're always looking at measuring where the money is actually going and that it's hitting those intended targets. But as I pointed out to you all on Saturday, one thing that's missing is that we don't have what I would consider to be enough of a directive towards the zero percent. Which is our homeless population. There's some obvious reasons for us to take a look at how we go into applying some additional resources there, but we'll have to make that. Data-driven, of course, and bringing those recommendations back to you. Ideally, what we would be looking to do is to try to figure out what are some impact projects or some impact scenarios that would make sense to bring back to you. So just quickly wrapping up what that H and R, HRNA report says to you. And this is a long list and it's not good news, but it's really to point out to you that. It's important for us to always deal with even the uncomfortable parts of doing this work. And then when the assessment comes in, you want it to always be good, but a good assessment also tells you what's bad and gives you an opportunity to focus on fixing it. I personally like to deal with the facts for what they are, and for me, when I see all the different responses that come back when you do the assessment, I like to create lists like this. So I'm sharing with you the list that I came up with. We don't know how many affordable units still exist from those that we funded. That's, that's accurate. We don't know even for how much longer they're going to exist, but we got to do better and there's work to be done there. We don't have.
Sam, I'm sorry, sir. Is that something that's measurable or is it just?
It is.
Too, okay.
It absolutely is. Part of it is that we don't have the, we don't have the mechanics in-house that are set up to be able to do that. We also have to retrain our partner community, developers specifically. On what it takes for us to be able to gain access to the information that we need. So those are the types of program improvements internally that have to be done. And why a report like this is important to do every now and again to point out those gaps in, in how you're doing the work that you're doing.
Yeah, and I just quickly want to add that if we're pouring, I think you said forty seven million dollars over. We, that is definitely something that, you know, I guess in the future, once we set it up, we would definitely be something we want to.
And not so distant future, we will be doing a whole lot more and being able to tell you exactly what we think about how this works and what, what kind of. Investments we may even need to be able to, to, to turn that around. We don't have a good compliance program internally. That, that's why we can't answer that question as, as well as we should be able to. We don't have the best agreements in play. They're not all, they're not the comprehensive set of agreements that we would use that would ensure that we could capture the information. That we are denoting who is responsible for reporting said information on what schedule. And, and that way we can then go back to them and get what we want to be able to point out to them. You sign an agreement and you're outside of compliance with that agreement. We're not necessarily protecting consistency in our execution. If we move around and we're not really following a policy and a program. That in itself makes it inconsistent and it makes it very hard to keep track of what it is that we're doing. Because we're always having to remember, why is this relationship different from all the other relationships? Or why is this one, this one and this one all different from each other, yet different from the rest of the relationships that we've established? We need to strive for more consistency because it doesn't make it more manageable in doing the work. We don't have a comprehensive housing policy. We have a series of policies on the books that are aimed at different aspects of, of housing. But we do not have an affordable housing policy for the program that we are actually running today. So that is a, that's a big flaw in the approach that we're taking. Because in itself, that means that we don't have something to go to that further directs our actions. And then gives us the ability to hold others to whatever those actions or requirements are. So there's some real work that has to be done to turn that around. We don't have a great, and I use great by choice, we don't have a great working relationship with our funded partners. We have a variety of good working relationships with funded partners, but they're not all in that great category. And they all won't always be great, of course, because sometimes when you have to be heavy, you can't be friends with them for a little bit, but they always turn around. Because he who holds the money always tends to hold their attention. And in the housing world at least. So for the great working relationship aspect of it, that is where the hack plays a role. That is where the task forces play a role. That is where getting out in the community will play a better role. And being able to, to fix any things that may be off and to try to realign things that have gotten askew over time. But I promise you, the one thing that I assure you that makes it better is a good, solid affordable housing program. That you are following, because the consistent measure of how you're doing, what you're doing and applying it across the board is how people then start. To see that this works, this makes sense, and, and we can actually live with these changes over time and it starts to turn around. We don't have a definition of affordable housing. I mentioned that to you on, on Saturday. We decided we weren't necessarily going to focus on if every one of the key terms had to be defined. I am not letting go of the notion that we need to define affordable housing. And I will point out to you later in this presentation what you should consider that definition to be. I'm not, of course, because we're not taking action, asking you to make any moves towards committing to that specifically. But I will be back to ask you for that commitment. I think it is important for us to be able to define it for the community at large. It helps our partners understand what that means to you as the council, but it also helps staff understand how to do the work that it is that they've been charged to do. So with this slide again, this is, this appears to be negative, but I don't see it as negative. I see this is all positive because now we know, when you know what you need to do, then you need to get to work. And I'm definitely ready for us as a team to be able to do that and get to work. But I don't want to miss the moment to at least celebrate something good, just because it did feel like it might not be all good. The one thing that the, the team from HRNA wanted to make sure that we did not lose sight of is that Charlottesville is punching above its weight class. And, and that is important for you to recognize that the forty six million dollars over the past ten years. And what we have as an endorsed plan of ten million a year for ten years. Is more than what your peer cities would be doing today in comparison. And, and that in itself, while it's a moment to celebrate, that doesn't mean stop doing what you're doing. It doesn't mean pull back and do less. It just means, thank you for what you've been doing. And let's keep doing more and let's do better at what it is that we've been doing. So that, that whole point is just to think about, we're doing good things, but we could do better. We need to be better at measuring the, the results of the work or achieving the desired outcomes that we have set. Being very consistent in how we operate our affordable housing program. And most importantly, we, we got to do this work because we have a lot of people struggling with this basic need across our community. And they deserve our best effort, period. And we all know that, and that's what it is that we're trying to do here. And I think it's important for us just to remember that we, we are doing some good stuff, but there's still more to do. And we're going to talk about affordability and the huge gap that exists in Charlottesville. And it is a little sad when you see it, when you reconcile what is actually happening in our market. It speaks to why we are doing what we're doing. So that for me, in, in total, just means that we're doing the right thing by continuing to stay focused on this topic and not considering it done. And, and letting us move on to something else. We've got to keep doing the work. So I'm going to stop there for just a second. I'm going to shift, we're going deeper into what are we doing and how are we doing it? And what I'm going to be recommending we can do to fix, but because I've gone through a bunch of slides, I just want to make sure that you had a chance to. Reflect on what you just heard, ask a question or two if you have one. And then if you ask something that's going to come up later, I'm going to say, pin that, we're going to get to it. Anyone?
Counselors have questions?
Well.
Nine marks or?
Yeah, just quickly, one of the earlier program, I mean, slides you had where you showed the dots of. Who is receiving the money and the, the. The amount of units and money that they've received. PHA was way out to the. Right, and I, I didn't, I didn't get to a chance to see what that exactly meant. Yes, that. So does that?
That's number of units.
Number of units, okay, okay. I was looking at the number, so, so. So for Java, the, you know, we haven't done a lot of units with them. And so I'm just kind of looking at this quickly and so. So for each unit we, we've done for Habitat, it's about forty five thousand dollars if I'm looking at that right. And we've done about a hundred or maybe seventy five if I'm looking at that. Is that the way to, I'm reading?
That's the way to read it, yes. And that's about, that's the average of the cost per unit and then versus the number of units.
Okay, so.
Gives you an idea to see who, who's leading your unit production. So from this PHA is leading the unit production for how the funds that are being dispersed are being used.
And, and, and just in, in general, and I know you may have this now. I don't know if that's, you know, if the average cost is five thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars if, you know, to, to do the, these type of things. I don't, is. I don't know if this is a. I don't have anything to measure this by, you know.
Right, and that's the point that I'm making to you is that with us having the right capacity dynamic in place. We should be able to not only show this to you, but express to you why we think that is a good number or not a good.
Ben, thank you.
That's, that's the plan for sure.
So Sam. On the other, there was another slide that looked, that's, that had, you know, the thirty percent AMI. This one, yes. I don't see where CRHA is on this.
Yeah, they didn't, they only listed PHA in the multifamily rental section. I'm not exactly sure why on this slide they did that. I can go back and look at it. I didn't realize that either.
And also, I mean, and then if we go back to the dots.
But they're also targeting fifty percent, so. I'm not sure why that's not there. I need to go back. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. It's just, you know, I was. The other thing I wanted to question is back to the, to the scatter plot. That we were just at. Is this just funds that were only given for construction and rehab, but not supportive services?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that supportive services piece had been taken out because. Like, you know, CRHA and PHA. And Virginia Supportive Housing all do supportive services as well, and I just wanted to make sure that those weren't. Adding into those because those are a distinctive difference.
Different service, right.
And what did the, what did the Thomas Jefferson Land Trust? You know, I had heard that we had given them money before, but I didn't realize how much or. What it provide, where, that's just news to me.
All right, I have the team on Alex. Brenda, do you, either of you remember what the TJLC?
Yeah, we. Good evening, good afternoon, counselors. Yeah, we provided them funding to acquire four lots. For infield development on Nassau Street. There were four. Four different units that they develop on Nassau Street. It's a homeownership units. They did that in partnership with Habitat and the city of Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund provided the proceeds. For that lot.
So the four lots were over a million dollars?
Nassau Street.
No, that's forty thousand.
Forty thousand, okay, per unit.
Per unit, right.
I just thought when we looked earlier, it said that we had given them a total of like two million or something.
That would have been other, other funds that we would have awarded to them. This collective report is what you were looking at.
So the three million, do we know what that three million was for total?
Yeah, you are, you are probably looking at another project. It's a light tech project. Usually what happens is. The city funds goes to a nonprofit organization, you know, so Carlton Views. You know, collaborated with. Thomas Jefferson Land, Land, Land Trust as part of that agreement. So the money had to go to the development through the land trust. You know, so that's why you have that big amount. It went to the development of Carlton View.
And that was over multiple years from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen.
Exactly.
So we gave money to Carlton Views?
Yeah, the city's money in Carlton View, frankly, a lot of money. Phase one, phase two, and I believe also phase three, phases one and two, phases two and three. I think there is, the city invested as part of the light tech project, one point four million dollars a piece.
Thank you very much.
And I, I'd just like to point out that, because it sort of helps emphasize. How relatively new all of us as counselors are that Carlton Views projects, all three of them were approved before anybody presently on council. Was on council. Some of us had some involvement in some of the issues going on, but a lot of this stuff. Is because of the lack of institutional memory frankly is, is something that we're having to sort of learn on the fly. So I, I, I will sometimes ask questions that people would say, how come he doesn't know that?
Sure, and I, I think I understand that, and I, I recognize that in looking at reports. One of the things that I would have expected that I might have been able to do when I first got here is just say, give me a stack of reports for the past few years and let me start reading through them. And I, I didn't necessarily have that luxury. That's, that's the result of, of shifting our internal dynamics to be able to produce that on some regular basis to you. So that then when the new council members join you, we'll be able to hand certain packaging to help kind of orient them to what work have we been doing recently? What are some things that were done by the prior council that will actually finish during your term and things of that nature? So I think we can work towards that as well.
And one of the questions I had, I think the very first slide where you showed the forty six point seven million dollars. And one thousand six hundred and eleven affordable units constructed and preserved. Then you had a plus six hundred and forty. Then you had a plus six hundred and forty additional households. What is that number?
That number came from uh the work that was done in in that we supported uh services. So most of that would be homeless services and other uh programs where individuals were of the right income bracket in that housing space, and we provided some sort of intervention, and we were tracking that at one time.
One of the things that I've sort of been thinking about, and I don't know whether it's a correct observation or just uh the result of looking too closely at too little data. But it seems that on average, it costs us, well, I, uh, these numbers would suggest it costs us about twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars per unit. If we're going to be constructing or doing anything serious to preserve affordable housing. Uh, which had me thinking about the the projects, the two projects on Park Street. One of them uh talking about three million dollars uh that we're supposed to be contributing works out to in the neighborhood of of thirty thousand dollars a unit. Uh, and at first I thought, gee, that's an awful lot of money, but it looks like that's really kind of hit the historic average.
Yes, that's right.
Um, let me, let me, uh, uh, great point, uh, uh, Mayor Snook. I just wanna add that uh on the average, if you are spending in terms of unit production, anything below thirty-five thousand to a unit, uh, that's a good investment.
Anything below what number?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five, okay.
So I just wanna um uh let you guys know, when it starts going above that, uh then um uh, uh, it becomes uh some kind of uh, there might be a reason why it will go above thirty-five thousand dollars a unit, but if it's below that, then uh the community is doing pretty good in terms of cost effectiveness and investment.
Okay, so we'll keep going. We'll go into uh digging a little bit deeper into what we're doing and and how things are looking and shaping up. And then uh we'll wrap up um with uh some decision points for consideration. Not today, but just to put on the radar and then next steps. So when you look in the planning space, um, we have an affordable housing plan. It's a very good document. Um, just want you to know that I do feel that way. It's a very good document. Uh, it's a, it's a high level vision. Uh, it shows that council has recognized that there is a crisis um that we're facing in this city that we wanna dedicate the ability to put ten million dollars per year for ten years towards doing what we can to be responsive to the needs of our residents. But it hasn't been a consistent message, uh, and that has been the one thing that you all will remember that I've asked you at different times. Do you see that ten, ten million per year for ten years as a goal or a commitment? I I view that as an important distinction. Uh, when you look at it as a goal, that means you may or may not hit it, and you do your best to get there, but you may or may not hit it, and you view that as okay at times to not hit. But if you really, really consider it a commitment, that means it is non-negotiable. You should be doing everything in your power to hit that number. Uh, but it also would suggest that if you hit that number, then you're done. Um, it's not to say that I am really trying to pin anyone down per se to making one of those decisions because you will always have the ability to go above ten million dollars. That's your choice. But it is important in in order for us to set the right kind of expectation that as we're interacting with the various members of our public who are coming to us for resources, that they then understand what your priority is. Is it ten million as a goal or ten million as a commitment? We already know, they don't think ten million dollars is enough. I did this work. Ten million dollars if I were to say what's going on in Charlottesville and I was on the ground doing the work, no, it's not enough. It needs to be half, half, fifteen million, it could easily be twenty million. Because that's how much of a crisis that we actually face in our community, so it is really just about setting the table. I think part of what I'm seeing in my time here being able to reflect is not committed and tied to how we're doing what we're doing, but to ask the right questions. This is about setting the table so that everyone can come to that table and understand what it is that we're serving here. And how are we planning to serve that? And then we do the best that we can with what we're able to pull away from the table with. That plan should be our roadmap. That's really the way we look at it. When you, when you spend the time and energy and the money to put together a plan, that plan should become roadmap. It doesn't go on a shelf. It becomes something that you're working on on uh all the time. You need to set some annual pit stops so that you can check in, check how are we doing, what's going on, fill up on new information and make sure we need to make some changes. Check the map so we make sure we're headed in the right direction, and then we get back on the road to where it is that we were going. Fits and starts don't do anything but confuse what it is that we're doing. If we say we're gonna do one thing and then turn right around and do something else, all we've done is a fit and a start. That just means that people now don't know what it is that we prioritize or what it is that we're working to. So it's important for us to really try to keep that in the forefront. Um, that we don't wanna confuse the situation. Every time we confuse that situation, that's time, energy and money. And it doesn't mean that we're gonna have a guarantee that by the time we finish, we're gonna hit our mark at the end. So that's what we're really, really trying to make sure that we keep uh keep in mind. When you're doing the uh, when you shift from the plan side of it, you're all about the im- implementation. Gotta make sure that we're managing expectations where that that implementation is always gonna be continue needs assessments. What is it that's missing? What is it that we cannot do? What is it we should be doing? That gap analysis is gonna be things that we're gonna always be thinking about what's missing. What is it that we're not doing and who are we not reaching and how are we not helping? Those are things that are gonna come up from time to time. You wanna know those things, but they're not to always change your course. They're to influence the rate of speed that you take, the amount of dollars that you may allocate for whatever, but also to just kind of keep you on track and targeted. And then you look for ways to do some investing, to pivot at an occasion when you feel that there's a need to do something, something responsive. Another pandemic strikes or we go back into serious COVID protocol. You wanna reconsider some of the actions that you take in, and you always wanna be able to go back and consult your reports to see how well you're doing at whatever it is that you're doing. So then when you shift from planning, you get into investing. One of the comments that was made was that we don't necessarily know where we're putting, how all our money is going out and what is it doing and things like that. So I wanna spend a little time to focus on that. It's like a honeycomb process. That's why I went and found this image, is money going in all different directions. I mean, there are multiple ways, so we spend it in multiple ways. But when you choose to spend in multiple ways, it complicates the tracking, and that's what we always wanna remember. Every time we add a layer, we make it a little bit harder to keep track of what it is that we're doing at the end with the dollars that we're releasing.
So, um, excuse me, um, Sam, is it, and you know, I know we're not there y- yet, but is it possible to get a a program or some type of system that whenever money is given or decisions are made and a a unit is developed, that someone can put in there, it's affordable until this year, it's to serve the AMI zero to thirty or fifty to eighty, whatever it is, so that if that planner or that housing specialist, you know, person leaves, that whoever comes in will be able to kind of pick it back up and we're just not lost. And ideally, that's where I would want to to be, so we're not trying to figure out where this, you know, you know, forty-seven, forty-eight million dollars, you know, because we're gonna be given more in the future for, you know, this, so yeah.
No, you're you're on the point. That's that's it for sure. We we should be able to track it. It should be consistent and it should be reliable. And it should not matter whose hand is actually pushing buttons or pulling the reports from the printer. All of it should be consistent and you just change out personnel to execute whatever uh queries and reports you wanna pull. That's what we're gonna try to get to. We've done some exceptional work over the years going back and looking at what we did to try to compile. And we have a few series of of moments in time where we did the work. That's how we were able to feed um HRNA, the information that they were able to use to do some of the work that they've done. But it also speaks to, because we had to do it that way, we don't know how accurate it ultimately is. And we wanna make sure that we're utilizing a system that will guarantee that our information is accurate because we can accurately define how much money we put out on the street. We should also be able to accurately define what that money went to and and did it meet its goal, its intended purpose. So when you look at the investing side, there are opportunities, and that's the reason why you always wanna look at, how are you investing, but what else could you be investing in? So just I'll highlighting a couple of things that have come up routinely in in this conversation as I've interacted with each of you. And as I've talked to different members of our community about where um where we could be uh having, having dollars go. An area of an opportunity would be the land trust. That's that's an opportunity for you to add an item to your affordable housing toolbox. There are a lot of communities today that are wrestling with the idea of how can we make it more affordable? Because simply building it isn't necessarily making it work for everyone. And rental is really where you wanna focus to ensure that at a minimum, a person has a place to live and it's a place that they know is not gonna disappear from them. But when you're in a community like this one where market rates are what they are and the drivers are what they are, and they change so much and they keep, continue to go higher and higher, even rental isn't safe because people are having to move because they can't afford, when the rent goes up, to stay where they are. The land trust gives you an opportunity to be able to fix um the opportunity for them to stay in place if they were able to attain homeownership as an outcome. It has its drawbacks. There are folks who don't necessarily believe it's the only way to do it, and I'll just point out to them, it's not the only way to do it. It is a way to consider making uh housing available for some. It's not the applicable uh option for everyone. People move through markets, they increase their incomes, and they don't necessarily wanna be tied down to any one property for a long time. And you wanna allow them the ability to move just the same. Um, but it is something that's worth looking into. So it's there on this list, and the way I imagine doing the work going forward, we'll be able to bring to you items like this, where we've done some work on that. We've done some analysis. We've looked at what our options are. The question really is, are we talking about creating our own? Are we talking about creating a land bank? Or are we talking about just making sure that the the community land trust that exists in our community is capable of doing the work that we needed to do? And you can set that motion, set that in motion by prioritizing that when we decide to give out funds. We wanna make sure that when we bring to you these opportunities to put the money out on the street, that we're also thinking ahead about how can they make the biggest impact? What are some different ways that we can deploy them? And can we get a different outcome, a better outcome, more of the outcome that some of us are saying that we want? The other, as I said, I'm gonna drill, 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 unhoused homeless population is important. The group of people we need to take a look at, what can we do? Part of what we need to do at this moment is identify what are some targeted investments that we could make that would be a difference maker. What are some service supports that would help to close the gap? When we talk to our homeless providers, the homeless providers are all doing various things. Some are overlapping, some are doing um enough to to catch up to the next place that the organization stopped. But not all of them are when you put them in the full continuum that we refer to in the homeless space. We locally, with all of our housing providers, can acknowledge we have gaps and there's no one in that gap. So if there's no one in the gap, if you're running a good affordable housing program, you stand in the gap. So what we need to be able to do is to figure out, how do we get in the gap in the right way with the right resources to successfully close that gap? How do you close that gap? It could be you ask one of them to expand what it is that they're doing and you fund them to do it. Or, and I know we have some opinions about how many nonprofits we have, you might stand up another organization to fill a gap or two if that's what needs to be done. But you don't know any of it if you don't do the assessment work, you don't do the analysis work, and you don't ask the questions. Vice Mayor, wait a second, your hand up.
Uh, yes, sir. So I'm just looking at this, the land trust, and I do agree, I think that's an area of of growth and and so I know that now PHA has taken that over. Can like um the Housing Authority um be a land trust as well? I mean, I keep bringing this up because I know this is what they did in Norfolk and they were doing at the time. It the things are maybe dated now. They were doing a lot of different things and and because this is what I wrote my paper, and they were that development arm for the the city, you know, of Norfolk at the time, and 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 you know, maybe at some point we have said the PHA or other would would take that that role. But I think if we're diversifying, and maybe some things that PHA can do, and they can do it really well. But maybe some things that the Housing Authority can can do. I just think that since I've been here and seeing, you know, the last thirty years as a student and now as a resident, that they haven't really played, they just really kind of stayed in their box, you know, more traditional box, and I think that they probably can do a a lot more. But you know, I I, we have to talk with m- Mr. Sales and see if that's something he'd be receptive to.
That's where I was going. I mean, that that would be, that would be the question. I mean, I think that's part of what the scenario is, is that as as the council and you're focused on these various things, you direct us to where you want us to go and look at things like that. If you're hearing about it and you're interested in it, then we can go do work to figure out what that means, how that could be deployed, and then bring it back for consideration. If it requires us to go and meet with different parties to talk to them, then it's a matter of, can they see themselves as that? Do they feel like they have the capacity to do it? One of the risks that you have in trying to establish more than one is, then that just means that there's gonna be more money needed in order to stand up the internal frameworks for being able to deliver it. You're already at a moment right now where you're you're trying to strive and push to ten million dollars. That's gonna likely cause you to have to do more than ten, you know, and and is it going to then diffuse how much someone else gets? It's gonna reduce what someone else gets to make room for them to fit into the space. So it it's something to think about. Um, and and I think what we will do is, part of the the way to look at what we should be doing differently is when we come back and we show you how we're doing with the money that we've been receiving. If you're seeing that we're not getting a a number of homeownership units on the ground, then that's where you say, we need to figure that out. We gotta do more in the homeownership space, and then we can go and do the investigation as to why it's not happening naturally. Sometimes the investment could spur it. Sometimes it could be that we have to find some new opportunities to bring additional dollars to the table that are outside of the city's resources to stand up an operation to be able to do what it is that we think that you should do. That's that last bullet there. Need council direction on city's role in standing in the gap. That was what that meant. I knew I was getting to a point. There you go. So when you look at investing, this is kinda give you an idea of what has prior councils done. This is what have they left for you and what have you inherited? Because uh the first box in green there is showing what's gonna be during your time here on council. Pending commitments are what is gonna be coming as responsibilities in the coming years. And then I like to always know where I'm headed and what's on the road ahead of me. Future commitment possibilities are things that we know based on what conversations are occurring in the community today that there's gonna be an ask coming to the city. We don't know what the numbers attached to those asks are gonna be, but we know they're coming. And at this moment, we need to be thinking about that. So when we look at our CIP, it's how we're making significant investments as we're making the decision about schools, and as we're approaching what limitations that may or may not have on our ability to do more uh bonding of projects. This is how you look at it from that housing angle, as to how this then helps you uh consider whatever decisions you're gonna make as it relates to uh how much of the CIP gets tied up for one project over another. But you got some current commitments um that with CRHA uh on the development side as well as the rental assistance side. And um with PHA in regards to Friendship Court being three phases, all of these are going to FY twenty-five. Where these are already in place. These are expectations, millions and millions of dollars. That's good work. But there are pending commitments that are right now, you're wrestling with Park and Macca. That's four point nine million dollars uh for additional projects. But you've also made some commitments, and that is gonna cost you uh to pay back tax rebates for projects that have already um that are already on the ground, and those are gonna come uh for payment, beginning with PHA for Friendship Court and FY twenty-four. We estimate it's gonna be roughly two hundred thousand dollars a year for what that is gonna cost the city itself to rebate uh for those improvements. That was a trade-off decision that was made by the prior council. There's no question on if it's worthy of of having that expenditure for what we know is gonna be on the ground at that time. But it's just to keep in mind that you've gotta look at every decision that you make and how those decisions carry some dollar figure associated with it. Because when we come back to you and tell you, are we hitting our ten million dollar goal, commitment, whatever it may be, I'm adding all this stuff up because all of this is a part of our story in the affordable housing space. And until you tell me otherwise, this is what I believe belongs there. Plus, what it costs for you to pay for Alex, Brenda and Erin to do the work that they do and the additional staff members that they bring to the table. I have a question for you at some point. Do we count the staff members who are in other departments that are doing housing-related work? That is critical housing-related work, but they are in Department of Social Services, Department of Human Services, Office of Human Rights. Those, 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 that work product is of value in our affordable housing program, and there's a dollar associated with that. Do we count that as well? Todd Divers is running the tax relief program. The tax relief program is a non-traditional program to be running. There's an expense in regards to running that program. Todd would kill me if I didn't tell you right now. He needs another tax specialist. We're gonna try to figure out how to make sure that that- He needs another tax specialist. We're gonna try to figure out how to make sure that that happens. That number should also be a party to this because it takes that to manage that tax relief program that we see as very important. Uh and a valuable resource. So there's some some reconciliations of things that we have to do. So that we make sure that we're arriving at the right number and we are fairly counting against whatever our our commitment actually is. Uh so that everyone understands what it takes to do a good quality housing program.
Sam, ca- can I just go back one, back to that last one? I I'm not sure I understand those two lines about the third CRHA thirty year tax rebate for Lytec units. PHA twenty five year tax rebate for Friendship Court. Explain that for me, please.
So with those, this is a performance agreement um for PHA in regards to doing the Friendship Court uh project. That for the first phase, we are going to um not charge them the taxes that are due. So it's in essence a rebate.
Okay.
The the city will take the hit for that bill.
I think we voted on that, Lloyd. It was kinda like a synthetic tiff.
Right, I okay, I I remember that piece, yes. That as what we're describing. So what's the CRHA thirty year tax rebate?
So if I'm understanding that correctly, it's for various units that were produced using uh Lytec, Lytec uh deal previously. And there's um is the is the same synthetic tiff scenario and that whatever tax obligation that would be due. Would not necessarily be paid and the city would be covering it. Alex, is there more that you wanna offer on that?
Well, I think I find.
So we have no idea what that's, you just got three question marks and.
Right, cuz we're not, there's a delivery date that I think is not determined yet um because it's it's a variety of units in different places. And that is when the taxes will start. So that's the reason why the question marks are there. But that too was a question that I had. So in my mind, that question should be answered.
Yeah.
We'll get it. I just have to go digging. Remember, I'm Indiana Jones. I'm digging all the time.
Are you scared of snakes?
I am, but uh I don't mind doing this work. So when you look at, uh I know this is to go into CAF. When you look at CAF, um the key parts of CAF at the moment is we have the hack restructuring. That's what we're gonna be uh going over with you tonight. Uh establishing the subcommittee for considering the grants. Um we need to look at aligning the Vibrant Communities Fund. Um the statement there is, it is my opinion that the Vibrant Communities Fund should no longer award grants for the housing category. And any of those requests should come to CAF. We should be able to build the CAF out in a way that any of those requests would be taken care of there. And it's important for your housing program to know that all requests that are coming into the city for housing should come in through one portal. And that way we know exactly what is being done. And then you expand the CAF because I know what I can hear some of my nonprofit friends who are listening at the moment. Are worried about, well, the CAF doesn't do all those things or there's not enough money there. This is a request to realign that, to make sure that the CAF grows for some or some additional amount. So that it can absorb those particular requests. But to also define the CAF in a way that you have these different categories to ensure. That the types of requests that have been considered by VCF will actually now be able to be considered by the CAF. Again, it's about keeping the information in one place so that we're aware of everything. And it goes through the same set of mechanics when we make the award. Um we let the money go out, we put out the report request, we receive the report, we notate how it's performing. It's all the same. Everyone who's listed right now in the Vibrant Communities Fund is having a request. Or recommendation for funding have all been through the CAF before, so it will be no different. Ideally, what we also mean in aligning it is that we wanna make sure that it is performing as efficiently as we possibly can. So we're actually looking to use the same system that our friends in Human Services are using for submissions to try to make it even more streamlined approach. We definitely need to, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just said, I like this. I like that, I mean, and just that when we do that, it would, I hope that we also make sure that. We can just factor in a certain amount of of administrative okay money that. Again, nonprofits, so many grants will not allow a nonprofit to have any administrative money.
Right.
But they should be able to pay their people a decent living wage as well.
That's right.
They should be able to make sure people have adequate health insurance and are able to take time off. Because we want people who know what they're doing to be in this work to help everybody too. And so, and I just know that so many grants won't allow for that, so.
And again, you have the control to set that. So that that's something to keep in mind as as the five of you come together to consider what the priorities are. We should be able to report to you that there's a request for that. When we're doing the the consolidated plan and the action plans each year, we're hearing directly from beneficiaries as well as providers of the various services. And the very, and executors of all the various programs. As we're hearing that information, we should be able to document that in a way to tell you that we have an increased request for operating support. And then you can wrestle with that on what that means and how that will look in the next round that we put the funds out. Um so we wanna acknowledge that we understand that operating support is there. One good thing that they all will have in understanding is that I did this work. I know what it takes and I know how hard it was to find affordable uh to find operating dollars. And it for me, it's a great opportunity for me to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that that is a reality for doing the work. They don't have people to do the work, it'll never get done and the people in need won't get what they're looking for as well. We need to en- enhance our own staff capacity as well, so it's not just us, it's them as well. Maintaining the data analysis is important for us and we gotta make sure that we're building relationships and repairing those that are a little strained and tested, I will say. Um when it comes to the Vibrant Communities Fund, you all have been having a whole lot of conversations about that. So I'm gonna try to lighten the load by pulling the housing mix mess out of there so you won't have to, you know, chew on those and make it a little bit easier. But eight housing focused proposals came in this year and seven, from seven different organizations. And all of them have been funded by the CAF before. So and that total request that they submitted was seven hundred fifty thousand, but was being recommended is a little over five hundred thousand. Simple solution is for us to work with our Vibrant Communities team. Let's go back a few years, average out what the various housing awards have been. That number is the number we say, let's shift that over to CAF. You get back to doing what you were doing, that's now not focused on housing as an additional layer of consideration. Let us consider all of the housing requests in one location and see if there's some synergy and better impact work that we can get done as a result. That's ultimately what we think we need to do. So when you look at our tax relief program, this is a breakdown of uh how the three different programs have operated. This is information I asked uh Todd Divers to give us uh for FY twenty two. Uh just to give you an idea of seeing who it is that we're reaching with this program. Tax relief is really, really hitting your up to thirty percent AMI. That's a good thing. That's what we wanna know. In my mind, if you're doing a tax relief program, that's where you try to aim it. You aim it for the lowest rung of the income bracket because they're the ones that are hanging on by their fingernails, just trying to keep what it is that is normal and stable in their lives. You don't see a lot of, you don't see any rental relief at up to eighty percent. Uh you only see four people in the fifty percent, but the majority of them in rental relief is at the lowest rung. That means you're really, really getting that subsidy as deep as you need it to be by um. By actually prioritizing those different income brackets and then you see how people respond. That's a good measure. You wanna come back and look at that uh from time to time. And and see if there's anything else that you wanna do. Um Todd will say that um he he advocated strongly uh much of last year to to merge the programs and make it easier to manage. That goes in the same vein as what I'm sharing with you about how I'm looking at the programs that we've been executing up to this point. We gotta be streamlined and be as efficient as we possibly can so that it moves a little bit smoother in getting the the dollars out on the street. You look at home and CDBG, our entitlement dollars are important to us because those are free dollars that come from the federal government. And they come every year, it's like clockwork. But one thing you have to always remember is if you don't do right by HUD, they will definitely prove to you that they cannot do right by you by taking it all away. It is our responsibility to keep them happy. And it is very simple how we do that. We just have to meet their expectations and they tell you what they are. They want you to manage a program well, they want you to meet their national objectives and they want you to prioritize low, moderate income households. They don't say that you can't use some mon- monies in some ways for over that, but they want you to prioritize low, moderate income households. We're doing that. They also, uh one thing that you always wanna do with HUD as well is just make sure that you um stay in good graces. So from time to time, they're looking for programs to spotlight. So if you can exceed that expectation, that's a good thing as well. The only way to ensure that you don't end up on a bad list is you can't have timeliness issues and that is our biggest issue here. We have timeliness issues, we've gotta fix that. Timeliness is an ugly word to HUD. They do not give on timeliness. I have seen them pull programs from communities and they don't give them back to them. They give it to someone else to manage on their behalf. That's the worst thing that could happen. Because then you lose the market actually driving how to spend those dollars, the local market making that decision. So timeliness is probably our biggest concern. We we are definitely adhering to the national objectives, but what we gotta make sure is that. We don't want HUD to ever accuse us of misusing funds and we don't want HUD to ever direct us to recapture funds. We have had to recapture funds. You recapture funds when the money is not spent correctly or on time. Those are things that we cannot forget. We've gotta always focus on those two priorities in the execution of programming related to entitlement dollars. We've gotta spend it on time and we've gotta spend it on what we agree to spend it on based on what they told us we could spend it on. The thing to remember about HUD is that they don't tell you exactly how to spend their money. What they do is they like to paint a nice big box for you and they say whatever your local market deems important, you whatever you need to do. But what they will do is they'll come down very hard to go outside that box. So that's what we have to remember. Um I had the luxury of meeting our HUD team just recently. Our 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 um representative who comes in on a regular basis to do the analysis work as well as a director for our region. They had good things to say about the work that we're doing, but we did not get out of the conversation without them saying timeliness. So they wanted me to hear that timeliness is the concern that they have for us and that's something that we've gotta make sure that we stay focused on. And part of that is looking at how we spend the money, what projects do we choose to do? Uh there are good projects and there are not so good projects for this money. Not to mean they're not good projects, they're just not good projects for this money. Because every dollar that comes from HUD, when you put it in the form of an agreement, when you actually receive it, there's a clock ticking. When you put it in the form of agreement, you have a new clock for that party to deliver. If they don't deliver, usually make sure that there's time that you're getting extended. But extensions are not what you want to be accustomed to doing on a regular basis. It's more work. And they are watching. Everything that Erin is doing in our system, there is somebody looking at every entry she's making, every change that she's making. And at any time that they feel like we're doing a little bit too much, they're gonna call her and talk to her about it. We don't need them calling us, we should be calling them. That's the best way to manage the relationship with them.
Sam, is this a staffing issue, the timeliness thing? Is that basically what it what it comes down to or?
Nope. We um we're doing a pretty good job on the management of our of our program. It can be a staff issue. In in some places I've seen that it's a staff issue because they're not actually making the awards. They're not putting out RFPs to get the money um responded to in the way of a proposal and then making the grant agreements. And then actually getting the actual grant agreement to them to be able to perform. Our problem with timeliness is that we're picking projects that we know are not working in the way that we can get them done in time. Sidewalk projects are good for CDBG when you know that the project is pretty much already studied, planned out. You're ready to roll, you're about to start pouring concrete. But to pick a project that has not had any design work, no evaluation whatsoever and and you're not even sure that it can be done. Because conditions suggest that it might not work, think scribbling. You wouldn't use CDBG for scribbling because we know that there are problems in the execution of that sidewalk project. But you would use that money somewhere else for something that you know can get done more quickly, something that you know that you can meet that timeliness objective. And you're gonna also meet the national objective. Sidewalks are permissible. And again, I I I pointed out to you, HUD paints a big box and they let you move around and play in that box. We're free to make the choice to do a sidewalk. Our problem is that we've had difficulty performing. And that's an example of one type of project that we have done more than once that really, really makes it a little hard for us to meet the timeliness expectation. Bus shelters would be another one. You wouldn't necessarily use CDBG money on bus shelters because there's a whole FTA process to get a bus shelter even approved. You would wanna do it for bus shelters that you know have already been approved. And you're close to being ready to execute and then you can plug these dollars in because there's some sort of gap that was identified. Or there just wasn't enough money all the way, but you did the preliminary work in advance. There's a way that we have to change how we do it so that we don't have the issue of the project can't happen, even though it's a good project. We can't necessarily do it because we're not gonna have enough time. And that's what we keep finding ourselves uh approving uh awards for projects that we know can't.
Sam, do you know how much money we've had to re? Recuperate?
Recapture?
Yeah.
Um Erin, can you speak to that for what you, um just pick a time period?
Good. We we um we just uh. I don't have the overall uh uh capture, but uh. A couple of months ago, we cap, we captured sixteen thousand dollars from Habitat.
Yeah, I would say eighty thousand dollars last year from social programs.
And that's money we had to give back because we didn't spend, but people told us they were gonna spend but didn't spend it.
So we pulled it back first, right?
Correct.
Yes. So the thing is that we have our own mechanism for recapture. So we in our, in the program as we're executing today, but actually wanna define it better. Is we can recapture from a nonprofit that is not able to perform so that we still have time to get that money redeployed. And can still meet our timeliness objective. The worst part of the recapture is when HUD tells you, no, we want you to send it back to us. Cuz if you, if that comes, then we lose it altogether. We don't have the ability to use that anywhere.
So have we had any recapture to to HUD?
Yes, I'm looking up the number now.
Now, the 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 recapture from us, I know because we, I know there was a whole series of time, there were every other week, every other month, we were. Every other meeting, we were voting on CDBG changes.
Yes. And you, and it's occasional. That's what, it's okay for it to be occasional because things happen. Projects don't necessarily come together. Anything can happen inside a nonprofit and cause a project to go off track and that's okay. You should be able to get forgiveness for moments like that. But it's the bigger recapture when HUD tells you, send the money back. We're not even gonna let you spend it. That's what we gotta always avoid. You never send money back to the federal government. I've always subscribed to that idea.
This past year, we sent back fifteen thousand dollars to HUD. As far as reprogramming and sending um money around to different programs that can spend down by. Keeping it within the city of Charlottesville, we transferred around about eighty thousand dollars.
Usually what that means is and that it's good for that moment to have happened with that question, Council Miguel. Is when you, when we tell you that in a report, then we should also be telling you why we think that's happening. Usually what it is, is that we might be overinvesting in an activity. Because if we're giving them too much money and they can't spend it, then that means we need to shift how much we give them. Or it's also possible that we invested in a bad project. Or we invested in a project that just went bad. All of that happens. That's okay. All those different moments happen. We wanna make sure that we always have within our way of managing these programs, the ability to. If we have to recapture, recapture it in time, that we can use that money in a different way and still meet the objective. And not be forced to have to write a check by the government. My head will be on fire every time going forward that we would ever have to do that.
So if we have like a list of needs that we know will fit CDBG home funds. That we could then, um that would take a very quick turnaround time to reprogram?
We, well, and that's one other thing that we will do is have standby projects. We need to make sure that we have a standby project list available that we can say, we gotta pull this and if we pull this, we're gonna need to do that. But we're gonna need to have the flexibility to be able to do that. Cuz if we have to go back through a full round process, process, if we have to go back through our or prescribed process of using. Our task force that may take a little more time. All those moments are timeliness moments that are actually we're losing as well. And that makes it that much harder for us to still be able to deliver. In all honesty, the size of the program for home and CDBG dollars that the city of Charlottesville receives, timeliness should never be an issue for us. It just really shouldn't. It's that, it's too small to do that. It is how we're doing it that we've gotta really focus on. How can we, how can we really make some adjustments to tighten it up? Alright, so I see I am rapidly losing time, so I'm gonna fly through some slides. So I just wanna show you here, this is kinda showing you, this is the. So I just wanted to show you here, this is kind of showing you, this is the next ten years. So we, we did the, we started with the ten year look back with HRNA, we're going to look at the ten years going forward. So for FY twenty one, we were able to exceed ten million dollars in support. So the year that you endorsed the plan, we did what we said we were going to do. FY twenty two, we are above that number as well. FY twenty three is going to get there, especially when you make the decision on where we are with Park and Macca is going to drive this up as well. There are commitments already in place, that's what this is intended to show you. When you look at the admin dollars, proffers, tax relief, CIP, VCF, CAF and home CDBG, all those different color coatings show you. An approximation of the agreements that we have on the books that show that we have money allocated that far out already. And what we want to do is just to make the right decisions on the space that is below the ten million. How do we make sure that it's strategically invested? Not only to, to get to the ten million, but to produce what it is that we desire to be produced. Make sure we're making the difference that we want to make with getting as many households affected and touched and, uh, in a place of stability. Uh, I recall someone, I think Mayor Snook, you asked, um, how does the money move through, what's our process and? This is meant to show you, this is how complicated it is. It's not an easy process to do this kind of work. When you have that many boxes and that many things, there's still more that could be added to this on what the home and CDBG process is. And it itself has its own system of boxes that you follow. The point there is that we got to have the right team, the right sized team in place to be able to do the work. So we'll be able to spend more time on this and figure out our way, other ways to streamline what we're doing, make it a little bit more efficient. But to be able to get you to that last box of monitoring, that's the one thing that we always want to make sure that we focus on. Every dollar that we send out the door, we should have the ability to monitor how it's being used. And to be able to come back and evaluate, is it being used the way we want it to be used? And then the last, um, well, one of the last items in the investing category is the proffers. So when we make proffers and, and I'm, I put scribbling here just as an example because it's a question. If we're going to do the sidewalk agreement tied to housing, are you going to count the scribbling investment for sidewalks as a housing investment? It's a question. Um, the Friendship Corps Performance Agreement that has two hundred thousand dollars a year, twenty five years, that's going to be, uh, a cost to the city. That's going to be an investment. This is an area where we have considerable work to do. This obligation originates in zoning, but there's no tracking that occurs beyond it. Once it's passed by you, it's on the books and that's it. We must capture these and all of the other housing activities which will require new parameters for developers. Um, we run the risk of losing their interest because tracking means it does not end at certificate of occupancy for them. It ends after however many years we were required that the unit be affordable. Because someone is going to have to be able to confirm that the person that's there in that unit is of the right income. To ensure that we can tell you that unit is affordable today. There is also a conflict of how proffers have deli- uh, deliver. Um, proffers awarded to developers part of an approving, approving their zoning requests and that means they agreed to deliver the units. But developers have also been permitted to partner with other organizations who then come to the city and ask for money to deliver the same affordable housing unit. That's a question, we see it as a conflict. It then becomes, is it a conflict that you want to fix? Or is it a conflict that you understand exists and you're satisfied with? That's okay, we'll do whatever we need to do to make the unit possible. But until we really, really have that conversation with you and give you the chance to decide on that, we just want to point out that that conflict does exist. Um, and I'll take just a quick moment. Go ahead.
Could you please go back one slide and could you please explain the conflict one more time for me, please?
So the, the conflict as it has come up in conversation with some council members when they ask about the different projects that are on the agenda. When the, when a proffer is offered, it's offered by the developer, we don't negotiate that, we don't dictate what it is. They'd say, well, we're going to do twenty affordable housing units as a part of this project. And they're coming in order to get their zoning approved and the zoning is approved by you as the council. And there is a commitment to produce twenty units. It is safe to assume that your expectation is that they're going to make twenty units happen, period. But in practice, what can happen is that same developer can go and partner with someone in the affordable housing space. Who is accustomed to actually doing that work, asking them to make those same twenty units possible, make them happen. But in doing it, they'll come to the city and ask for the money to build twenty units. That means you really got the same twenty units out of the same agreement, out of one.
Yeah, I know we can talk about this more later, but that, what you've described to me is unacceptable, so we can talk about that more later. Prevent, present, prevent that, but I don't want to see that happening going forward.
Yeah, and it's a question. I mean, it, it, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just making sure that you understand that it exists and the question has come up. And when we've given the answer, it's obvious that it's not necessarily been appreciated from everyone.
I don't want double counting and double dipping, so if there's a way that we can.
And that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we're guarding against, we don't want to double count. Alright, so on the admin side, today, the admin side is the Office of Community Solutions. We didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about this great idea of mine last fall when I came up with it and said, well, we don't have a team. Really truly assembled just to do the nuts and bolts work that is the affordable housing space. And then I learned that in addition to a housing coordinator, we had a redevelopment manager. Who didn't have a department to be a part of. And then our home and CDBG money was being tracked by an individual who was sitting within NDS, but. Still, it wasn't coordinated, it wasn't coming together. So the thought was to bring them together and, and create what some communities would call a community development office. We use neighborhood development services, the goal was to try not to make it as complicated and confusing. It's just to try to pull out, housing redevelopment and neighborhood services. Are within the purview of this new team that is assembled as the Office of Community Solutions. The goal is to potentially expand this team to do those three things to the best of our ability. To be as consistent as we possibly can in doing that work and to make sure that. If we need to do something in either one of these spaces, there's now a place to go and get that work done. We don't have to try to figure out, is it NDS, is it public works, is it somewhere else? Now we have this one place to go.
And that would be in the city manager's office?
And that makes it a part of the city manager's office because affordable housing is one of your top priorities. And as I see it, will remain one of your top priorities for years to come. This is some work that was done as a part of that analysis was just to point out that we can go in all different directions. With expanding out what this team could do because as you complicate it and add more money. Different ways of doing what it is that we're doing, there's going to be a need for additional hands and brain power available to help. Manage and work through that. So we can always talk about this more later, but this is just to show you that there is more that can be done. There are more critical roles that are needed if we are to go down this path in any more significant ways than what we're doing today. And this is why we have to think about it now. These are the things I shared with you in the beginning that we're not doing. And some of the roles that are listed there are how we get those things done. So if we look at performing and we got to be better at tracking and, and the way we can do that is we've got to come up with some tools. So the hack has done some work. This is just a snapshot of the Housing Intervention Analysis Tool that was prepared by the hack. This isn't exactly what it looks like, it's an Excel workbook, it's a very sophisticated workbook. Part of it is it's a manual entry system, so it can be corrupted over time. And it's only as good as what you put in, that what is, um, what comes out. We got to make sure that this is the right tool for us to use. This is one of those relationship building moments for me to go and work with Hack to figure out. How we can get this document, this, this workbook up to date fully. Who owns it afterwards? Are they going to do it and report into it themselves and that way we can have that consistency? Or do we do it ourselves? So that's one of the questions that we can explore. One of the things that I've actually been exploring more recently is, is this new enterprise land management system. That we're in the process of, of beginning our strides to bring live next year. Could it do some of this work or could it do the work if we were able to add to it? So there may be a question that comes from that as well. Another tool that'll come is the Implementation Work Plan. This is something that I put together when I first got here as a tracker. This ultimately will become how we track the implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan. It is going to be able to lay out for you the funding recommendations as they were provided in the plan. We should be able to break down all the parts and pieces to them. What is the human allocation, what is the fi- uh, financial resource allocation? Looking at it from the goal perspective, what is the short term, midterm and long term goals associated with that? What potential barriers exist? How are we adjusting and what's the status of it? Both of these tools in my mind become report items for you. These are things that we can be able to provide to you on a regular basis throughout the year that you can consult and see how well we're doing. And from time to time, we will present to you. But in addition to that, we can provide this to the public because these are documents that can go on the website, they can have access to at any time. So once we can turn this into the kind of document that it needs to be with the right quality information. As we're updating it, we can make it live and in living color for you to look at any time, public to look at any time. And then we can come back and report to you how it's working and what it actually is saying. So some other things to consider, um, our alignment with Hack, we talked about the structure of subcommittee. Remoting some of the tensions with staff and making sure that we can all play, uh, play like friends in, in the sandbox. Cause we only got a box, it's not going to get so big and we got to make sure that we can do things that we need to do. Uh, and then what are some strategic investments that we can look at? How can we make sure that we're doing all the things that we can possibly do to make it possible to reach more people? We got to make sure we're reaching as many households. What are some external grants that we can go after? What is some leverage dollars that we can, um, look at, uh, being able to deploy? In concert with our friends in, in the county. We had some conversation about that as well, that's how we're going to have to tackle the homeless problem. Is, um, the, the homeless situation that we face. How do we resolve that problem when people are actually coming here? Because we do so well at trying to offer a variety of services that are just not available in other communities nearby. But we've got to make sure that we're looking at what those strategies are. So here's the big one, and I don't have much time, so I'm just going to tell you what I think and not leave a whole lot of room for you to disagree with me. Uh, what is affordable housing? The fact is, anything is affordable because anybody, somebody can afford almost everything, right? That's, that's the problem with that term, affordable house. In the housing sector, it's pretty settled, it's not a question. HUD defined affordable housing a long time ago, eighty percent and below, that's affordable, period. They also went as far as to take it all the way down to extremely low, so below thirty percent is extremely low income. Below fifty percent, very low income, low income is below eighty percent and anything above that is moderate. We stopped counting at one twenty, it's no longer important for us to be worried about what's affordable at that point, so we just stopped talking about it. And this is how it's been done for a long time, it's not a question. But you hear AMI thrown around a lot and people are always saying, well, what's the AMI on this and AMI on that? Charlottesville has a very high median family income. That in itself skews everything to, all of our numbers are going to be a little bit higher as a result, that's actually a good thing. That means more people can fit under the tent. Because the caps for each of those, uh, measurements are a little bit higher than you would find in a peer city. So we did this unadjusted for family of four. Twenty eight thousand dollars and less is thirty percent AMI. Twenty eight thousand dollars is not a lot of money when you think about what it costs to live in the city of Charlottesville today. So anyone who finds themselves in that situation is going to have a difficult time finding something to rent. And be able to sustain a good quality of life when you have all the other bills that come. We're just simply living, we didn't talk about car payment or any of those other bills that any of us may have. But affordability is actually achieved when you're not spending any more than thirty percent of your household income on housing. That is not our story. That's the goal, thirty percent. Many communities are spending about fifty percent. The Charlottesville experience is that we know people that are probably spending almost eighty and ninety percent, they don't have a whole lot left for anything else. That is why we have a problem, that is evidence that there's a problem and we need to do something to turn that around. And the example I want to show you is that just looking at the resources available as the housing choice vouchers that we receive from HUD. That comes to the housing authority. They target those, that program for fifty percent AMI and below. Seventy five percent of those, those vouchers are targeted to thirty percent AMI, that lowest rung, the deepest affordability. This is what that looks like in numbers. Our fair market rent in the city of Charlottesville, based on HUD's projections, and they do this work every year and update it and tweak it for what their analysis, uh. Suggested should be, is a thousand seventy seven dollars a month. Our housing choice vouchers, the max that they can go was one thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars. We came up with our own program to parallel the vouchers. And we set the city cap at one thousand three forty six, and if they use our program in the county, it's one thousand one eighty five. It's still not enough. We've been asked recently that we should consider increasing the max to a hundred and fifty percent, that would take it to sixteen sixteen. This is why it's important for you to consider it. Because it just so happened that this item was dropped on us and it showed us what affordability looks like around the country. If we do our own comparison to this particular slide here for the city of Charlottesville. A thousand square feet is what an individual will be able to find. And it's going to be roughly fourteen hundred dollars a month. That puts us just above Las Vegas and just below New Orleans. That's not good. If you think about New Orleans and Las Vegas as comparables to the city of Charlottesville, you know we're in trouble. We're a fraction of the size of those communities and our folks are paying those rates for housing. That is why we've got to make sure we stay focused on the job. So I always like to say, it's not about affordable, we don't need to be focused on the word affordable, our focus is on the word attainable. What is even possible? What can an individual actually secure for their livelihoods, for their stability in our community? And today, we're saying that they should be paying what folks are paying in Las Vegas and New Orleans. We got to do better than that. So I'm going to wrap up, um, by just telling you that I'm going to share with you this PowerPoint. There are three more slides that I'm not going to get to, but I'm going to, I'm going to make sure that you get this tomorrow. It'll be posted on the website so the public can actually take a look at it as well. But there are some serious decision points that we need to make sure that we, um, bring back to you and look at. There is a lot of work that needs to be done internally, so we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and break all that down. And then there's a lot of next steps, many, many next steps. So I'm going to stop there and just take these last few minutes for reflections from all of you and any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I'll just say that this was fantastic, uh, really appreciate it, Sam, very. Very helpful, pulling all these things together, particularly for a person who's new to this like myself, um. I, I guess I, I have just a number of reflections, I, I don't think that any of these will be. Need to be answered tonight, but there are things that came to mind.
And you're going to email me just like, you can email me questions, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Okay, well, maybe I'll just do that. I, I can just do that. I guess just a couple of things though, for the group, I mean. In terms of the homeless situation, I knew, I believe you said we were going to be coming back, y'all will be coming back to us and. Later in the spring with some, with a, the good update on the, the thinking there, correct?
Yes, we're actually thinking we would do a work session on homelessness in.
Right, okay. Right, and then in terms of the land trust, whether it's owned by PHA or by, or led by PHA or, or by the city. I don't have strong feelings about that, what I don't want to do is, is invest in a bunch of rework. If what PHA or whoever has is working, as long as we've got, you know, solid guardrails to make sure that that's. Um, being done in a transparent way with oversight from us, um, that, that's where I stand on that. Um, in terms of the ten million dollars per year, and this gets back to the, to the investing graph that you showed. We were, you know, seven, you had a line at ten million, but the next few years are basically at seven million. One could argue that with a seven million dollar investment. Over the next years, we're already meeting what was agreed to in the Affordable Housing Plan a year ago. Would you agree with that or does that make sense at least?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying that because remember that, that's the point of the question, is it a goal or a? Because then that just becomes a mark, if it, if it's, if it's something that you don't want to focus a lot of attention to, that's fine. But if it's about us hitting that mark every year. Then of course for us, that means we want to make sure we are aware of what other projects are coming down the pipe. Reality is, those, that, what you saw on that chart is not where it's going to end. We know that there are people working on projects right now that we won't have those numbers for them for another two years or so. I mean, CRAJ is working to do their entire portfolio, they're going to have new numbers coming.
Right, but I guess my point is that the seven million that you're showing was just for direct subsidy. And did not include the other components of affordable housing, that, that one chart, correct?
Yeah, in that section, yes.
Okay, alright, um. As far as I'm concerned, I think that ten million should be our goal, we should, or commitment rather. Um, it should be, and that's, that's where Brian stands, uh, commitment every year that we do ten million. With some flexibility in terms of averages. Um, you know, maybe over a three to five year span that we average, uh, that amount. I also feel like in terms of, and I, I understand your points about, well, do we count this? These FTEs as part of this program or not, um. I say let's err, so to speak, on the side of, you know, being inclusive of. If we're really spending time and money in this sector, let's, let's document it. And then maybe what that means is our goal needs to go from ten million to eleven million, I don't know, but I'd rather know what those numbers are. Uh, so that we can speak to it. I like the idea of putting the VCF housing stuff through CAF. Really appreciated your defining affordable housing, those slides at the end, that's very helpful, I think it, it. Thinking in terms of attainability versus affordability. And then whatever we can do to be aligned with the regional housing plan that, that the planning district is doing. I have no idea where that effort stands, my guess is that we're a good bit ahead of what they're doing. And I don't think we need to like slow down or necessarily tailor what we do to fit into theirs. But, you know, just to be as aligned as possible.
Sure.
So those are just a few things, again, really great job, fantastic presentation.
Other counselors have, have comments or questions that we need to address now?
Just real quickly, likewise would agree, you know, I, I view the ten million as a commitment rather than a goal. I think I also agree that the, the land trust idea, especially if you think about how that could work with a land bank. Is an idea that can be pretty transformational in expanding how much land is available for affordable housing. And, and, you know, getting to more permanent affordabilities at deeper AMI levels. And to me, the bottom line is just what approach is gonna be the most effective and produce the most housing opportunities at the deepest AMI levels. And more broadly, definitely agree, we should be routinely looking at the, what we're getting for our investments, looking at the efficiency and impact. And be willing to adjust based on what we're seeing from that data. And final two things are, you know, I think the slide on. You know, future phases of public housing redevelopment are really important. You know, I'm still concerned that we haven't fully incorporated that into our budget, and when that time comes, we won't be able to make that commitment. I think we just need to do a lot of planning to ensure that doesn't happen. In, final thing is, is just, you know, as others mentioned, what can we do to become a closer partner with CRHA? And partner with them on operational capacity. And just continue to think about them as a very vital and close partner for affordable housing and grow that, you know, as we're doing this.
Okay, other counselors?
I mean, I, I, I've, I've made a lot of comments throughout, throughout, and I know time is tight now. I, I just look forward to, you know, us providing concrete input for you as you move forward. And to hearing your reports as you move forward, but I was taking, I know you're gonna put it on. This one.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
But I was taking some pictures because sometimes when I'm in the parking lot or in the store, I can't have that, but I can go to my pictures in my phone. To answer some questions, so thank you so much, this is so helpful, thank you very much, sir.
But that's what I wanted it to be, right?
I'm just gonna put out there that I am worried at our zero AMI level. And this is kind of a stark reflection on how we're not putting anything into that. I know we do pass through from the feds with EEG with the homeless solution, HSG and ESG grants. But that we're not really seeming to put a ton. Though TJAC, we do give money to TJAC, so that's not really reflected in that. But yeah, I'm, I am getting growingly concerned. Because regretfully, we are back to, it looks like numbers that we were before the crossings opened, so.
Just, you know, CRHA does serve zero percent AMI, so that is one mechanism for that.
I, I guess I would just wanna make two comments, one is, and this is at some level a matter of semantics. I look on the ten million dollars as a goal and not a commitment. And the difference, as I said at the, at the Impact Meeting, is that a commitment is like my wedding ring. That's a commitment, that's not an average, I don't average fidelity over five years. That's a commitment, I'm willing to average, which makes it a goal. But it's not a commitment for me, furthermore, we don't have the authority to bind future councils as a commitment. So it, to, to some extent, doesn't make a lot of sense to, to worry about that excessively. I say it's a, it's a strongly held goal. But if we have a financial crisis on the order of COVID or something like that. I, my, my marriage survived COVID, some financial commitments from the city did not. So I, 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 I wanna keep the, the semantics clear. The second thing is, I just wanna note, nothing about a land trust helps us establish it. It doesn't save us money to call something a land trust, to put money into buildings. Or to put, or to buy land, it's simply a, a nonprofit receptacle for the land. It still requires actual money from us or somebody else to build. So in terms of a long-term maintaining affordability, that's fine. It, it helps people who wanna buy land, who wanna buy a property, but they don't need to be investing in the land itself. And that's the long-term value, is it takes out some of the speculative value of the land. But it doesn't make it any easier to establish, most of the land trusts have been established, have come. Because large sums of money have been given to the land trust to buy the land. Or land has been donated, or it's come through a, a federal program of some sort. And so we have to be realistic, that saying that we wanna put something into a land trust. Says more about maintaining future affordability than it has to do with making it easier to get the unit in the first place.
Mayor, I think your point about commitment versus goal, I mean, all that makes a lot, I hear what you're saying. If we wanna call it a strong, a strong goal, a strongly held goal, I'm, I'm fine with saying that. But it's, I guess if we just sort of put a, I mean, to Deputy City Manager Sanders' point, if we just sort of put a figure against the wall. And don't really say this is super important to us, then.
Alright, it just makes it a little bit harder to make that clear, but that's okay, I mean, we, we've been doing it. I think part of what we understand is, is that it, it's hard to make that distinction. And we'll just continue to do our best effort until we can get to a place where we're more comfortable, or we're the other.
Well, of course, the reality is that in city government, something is a commitment until it isn't.
That's true.
So anyway.
It only takes a vote.
Until you can't afford it.
Yeah. Okay, it is twenty of six. We have designated a closed session starting at five thirty, we're a little bit late to that. But we're the only ones who are gonna be there except for Ms. Robertson anyway. Is there anything else we need to do right now that we can't do at six thirty or thereafter? Except to thank Mr. Sanders for a very thorough report and a challenging report, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so we need someone to read us into a closed session. Has somebody got that motion up?
Alright, I think I got it. Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one two of the Virginia Code. I hereby move that the city council close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code. Section two point two dash three seven one one A one and A eight. For consideration of future appointments by council to the city's Planning Commission. And legal consultation regarding compliance with requirements of Virginia Code one five point two dash two two dash one two.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, city council will now go into closed session. We will return to a separate Zoom link for the open meeting at six thirty. Thank you folks, and I'll see counselors in the closed session.